Good evening, everyone. Want to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, meeting of the Douglas Board of Selectmen. I am filling in for Chairman Kevin Morse. An unexcused absence, as is David Cortez. So with that, there are no announcements because I'm not the chairman. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak that is currently not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move right into the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First on the agenda, Matt, is the ZBA alternate appointment. And I know we just met Mr. Palmer. You want to serve in the ZBA, sir?
I do, sir.
Very good. If you could, for the millions watching at home, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, I'm a vocational school teacher. I was a contractor for years. I have, you know, the background and all that stuff. I teach building and property maintenance at Bay Harbor-Johnson. I've lived in town for probably around 14 or 15 years. I'm not sure exactly what the date is. But, you know, if I'm not willing to help out and serve and help my town, then I have no right to complain or anything else that goes on in the town. So I feel that I should put my best foot forward and help the town.
Sounds good to me. You OK, Hal? You're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
OK. And with that, I see that the -- your colleagues on the board are in full support of your appointment, so I think that's great. So with that, I'd move passage or accept a motion.
Make a motion to appoint Jim Palmer as a period of three years as an alternate on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
And it's been seconded. All the roll call vote, please.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone, an aye.
Davis, aye.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Everybody could use the mics a little bit. It was fading in there a little bit.
Gotcha. We are--
Yeah, just, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Just have him make sure he gets swan in before his press meeting.
OK. Yeah, so check in with the town clerk, Chris Verno, and--
I'll send you a letter--
Thank you.
--and if it explains what you need to do.
All right. Thank you very much.
And we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Jim.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night. All right. Item number two is our Personal Policies and Procedures Amendment. We're a third reading on a military leave language. And with this being the third reading and us not having a full board, I don't -- unless there's a particular reason, I don't know why we would not act at a later date.
Act at a later date?
Yeah. I mean, I see here that there's some language that we're looking to change. I don't know if the other board members have had an opportunity to weigh in on that. Are we fine with holding off on that?
It's urgent, Mr. Administrator.
Not urgent in that sense. Then we can't wait two weeks.
Two weeks, well, man.
All right. Let's do that, then. First reading of our Vehicle Use Policy Amendment. This is a particular issue, Matt, that I think we, the board, asked you to kind of put together, and our first reading.
So this is the first reading. It's by way of introduction. I misspoke. I was incorrect. At our last meeting, we do have a vehicle use policy in the Personnel Policies and Procedures of the Town of Douglas. And it was written quite well. It was designed to address the IRS fringe benefit triggers. And so we don't want to create a taxable benefit for employees. We don't want to have to track this stuff. So there's a specific formula in the language that cannot change. That specifically is these requirements that you see in bullet points under Point B. The employee's job description specifically designates the employee as "on-call" or "on-call 24/7." There's a requirement for frequent emergency availability. The employee has been issued a pager or other communication device, so in other words, they're not only on-call, there's a way to call them. Emergency or other equipment is contained in the vehicle in no town facility and/or no town facilities available for garaging in a safe and convenient location. That is pre-existing language that has to stay. Where I've drawn the line a little bit was I felt that the original policy made it improper for an employee to deal with incidental trips. So let me give you a couple quick examples. Probably the one that's most salient to me because there's a -- this time of year, there's notoriously terrible time of year to fix a water break. So you have four or five people standing around a hole on a night when it's 16 degrees outside trying to fix water. And coffee shop's still open. One of the guys takes the town vehicle, runs to get coffee for everybody. The way the policy is written now, that would technically be a violation because it's for personal purposes, not part of the job. But it really is kind of just a human factor. Same thing if you're driving -- again, all of these people presently would be Douglas residents, so they're going to drive by a coffee shop in the morning, or they're going to -- they're at the office, they're going to run across the street or down the street in their town-assigned vehicle to pick up lunch, come back and sit at the desk and eat it while they're working, or not, take their half hour. In any case, those are what I think the IRS pretty much defines as immaterial or unimportant -- looking for de minimis personal use, incidental to the performance of town business. De minimis, the de minimis rule applies across all fringe benefits. So it is a minor alteration from a pure black-and-white ban on the use of the asset for a personal reason. But it has no impact on, you know, it's not the kind of thing that we would expect somebody drive home, get your personal vehicle, drive to the coffee shop, drive back to -- it's just nuts, right? So that's what the de minimis rule means, and I think it needs to be incorporated in the language here. And that's what I'm shooting for. What we don't want are those employees who work for the town 24/7, who routinely work way beyond 40 or 50 hours a week, especially in the wintertime, to be criticized because they ran over to a coffee shop or, you know, made some other incidental stop. There are some things that clearly people should never do. They should not take a non-employee family member, like a kid of, you know, go pick up the kid at school. You can't do that. That's bona fide, absolutely a personal use. You shouldn't, you know, throw your lawnmower in the back of a town pickup truck and take it to be repaired because that's not town business at all. That's your personal business. Just because you've been given a pickup doesn't mean you can use it for your own reasons. That's what people don't want to see. I just don't want our hard-working folks getting, you know, dragged around in social media or anywhere else because they made an incidental thing. Now, I had the opportunity, and earlier in my career, to have to intervene in a different town with a group of Department of Public Works employees who routinely went in their town vehicles to the same coffee shop every morning. They would get to the barn early, then go have breakfast together at Dunkin' Donuts, and then be back to the barn in time to work. But they were taking their town vehicles every single day at 6:00. So of course, I had to go to Dunkin' Donuts at 6:00 and sit down across the room from them and gently point out that they weren't really there on town business and that it was inappropriate. So de minimis incidental use means precisely that. It's not a routine that you do all the time. It's something that just comes up in the course of a normal day's business. A lot of this goes on already. I just want to make sure that our people aren't dragged around for it. So that's the goal here. And I also wanted, when I give authorization to, really, it's three people right now: the highway superintendent, the working foreman at highway, and the assistant chief of the fire department. Doesn't have an assigned vehicle at the time, but might in the future. When they get that permission, that authorization, I want the rules to be clear on what is expected of them. So that is the purpose, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, one comment.
Sure.
It's fresh in my mind. You described the non-employee family member. So under C, Rules Governing Use, and under number two, if you can just put non-employee family members in there, because otherwise it'll make it difficult for some of our town workers.
Welcome to a small town, right? We have a number of employees who are related to each other either through marriage or through birth, so we will make that edit so that the word, the phrase "non-employee" will precede "family members." So, "Non-employee family members shall not be transported in town vehicles," is the way it will read.
Thank you.
Great. And we've got two more readings with a full board, so we'll catch another one of those. Thank you, Matt, for putting that together. Onto item number four, Memorandum of Understanding Regarding the Fire Academy, and more specifically, those attending the Fire Academy.
So I want to defer to the chief. Is he still on? There's an icon that says Kent Vincent, but--
Hello?
There you go. Hello, question mark inside a circle.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Can I have the other picture back?
Face for radio.
Chief, good evening.
How you doing?
Good, thank you. Go ahead, Matt.
Chief, why don't you brief everyone on how we got to this point? And if I need to add anything, I will.
We're talking about the academy, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
OK, so we had a -- we bargained this past spring, it was bargained that a person who worked for us, who was a paramedic, if they didn't have firefighter 1-2, that they would be required to go to the Massachusetts Fire Academy. And it is the recruit program, which is a 10-week program--
10 weeks, right?
Five days a week. We had, at the time when this was bargained, we didn't put the money in because we had two EMTs here that were -- that eventually left here. And so we had to hire two paramedics who didn't have the firefighter training. So we're now sending them to the Fire Academy. They're going five days a week. It's about an hour each way. So we bargained, actually, we had to draft us the language that would include that they would be paid a minimum hours a day from 5:30 in the morning to 4:30 in the afternoon, plus mileage. So it would be 55 hours a week, plus their mileage. And this is something they're required to have, the firefighter 1-2 training through the Fire Academy. Am I missing anything, Mr. Wojcicki?
Why don't you explain for folks who may not be familiar with what's involved in firefighter 1 and 2, what benefit it is to the town to have people get that background?
Number one is the industry standard. To be certified as a firefighter 1-2 is about 400 or 500 hours of training. There are two different academies. There is the Recruit Firefighter Academy, which is 50 -- it's five days a week going to the academy. They're actually paid while they're at the Fire Academy, and they receive about 500 hours of training, from hazardous materials training to driver operator. So they learn how to drive an engine, how to pump the engine correctly. Pressures, learn all about all aspects of firefighting, including gas school.
Not covered necessarily.
And it, yeah, it's -- some of the items are not really covered in the -- the Call Volunteer Program is about probably a little less than half of the training that the full-time members get. So they get a lot more of the training that you would get in the -- that you wouldn't get in the call. And pretty much, it's more structured fires, more working in a burn building with live fire, the gas school. But it's about between 400 and 500 hours of training, and it's about an hour away from here, so it's two hours of travel a day.
He's going to accept the Call Volunteer Program for our full-time staff, and we're finding that they had gaps in their knowledge, including the fact that we had to train them to drive fire apparatus, which, because we work in small groups, try to get that training accomplished. And not having that knowledge base right out of the gate, we found, really handicapped us as a small community. So that's essentially the path to sending somebody to the full-time recruit program versus sending a career firefighter or accepting a part-time Fire Academy compared to firefighter, which is what we used to do. So that's the difference for the Town of Douglas.
So we remind people that have come through the Call Volunteer Program before, and it lacks in the physical training part. When they go to the Fire Academy every morning, the first hour of their day is running and all types of physical education type stuff as well.
So as a thematic measure across the entire -- this iteration of the contract, both management and the union agreed, we want to support a much higher level of physical training, physical fitness, and preparedness for the job. So we have, throughout the entire contract, not just the academy requirement in the beginning, but throughout the contract, there were substantial changes made to support a highly-trained, physically-fit, mentally-prepared group to work with. This particular piece, one thing I wanted to address, because sometimes people's minds will work this way, so you're paying them for 55 hours a week? Oh, my God, is that overtime? No, because our firefighters work an average 56 hours a week. So their straight time will reflect -- basically, they're going to top out at 53 hours of straight time a week, so it's not all overtime. But it's a good deal for the town. There is a philosophical difference, right, between the agencies that have decided they want cross-trained professional firefighters with academy training who are also trained EMTs, preferably at the paramedic level. And that's a huge difference from perhaps a larger community where you'll have, the two services will be split. So your paramedics would man an ambulance, and your firefighters are firefighters. They don't respond to medical calls unless they're desperately needed or if they have EMT training. In a bigger city like Woonsocket, you would see that. You don't get on the squad unless you have the training. Everybody else is a firefighter. They sit in the fire station, they wait for fire calls. In a smaller town, the more broadly-trained our folks are, the more efficient the use of their time is. So we get a lot of value for what we spend to go to full-time, which was part of the deal that occurred four or five years ago, just previous to my starting with the town, with the firefighters' union. So this is taking a step towards it. My signature here reflects that this is a tentative agreement, that it was my understanding that this is something that we wanted to do as part of the negotiations, but it doesn't take effect until the Select Board signs it.
I was going to ask you about that. The question, what if the applicant or the -- the recruit doesn't complete the training program? Are we still paying him or her for the time served?
Well, you get paid to try, but you can't stay if you don't pass. Right, chief?
Yeah, that's a requirement. They have to achieve the Recruit Firefighter Training Program certificate when they're done and be a certified. It's actually a pro-voed certification when they're done.
These things that occur part of them during the Fire Academy, make sure they're physically capable of performing. They have to pass an exam called the Physical Abilities Test, which is administered by the Human Resources Division of Commonwealth and Massachusetts. So unless they, and basically that tests their ability to perform essential functions of the job, so if they don't get through that, they don't even get admission to the Fire Academy. So most of the people that we have interviewed and screened for this program, they're prepared to go, they go, and they pass it, and that's typically not a problem.
So our investment is early in the individual, not necessarily after he or she passes it?
I'm not entirely hearing you.
So our investment is in the individual prior to us sending him or her to the recruit training program, which is fine. I just want to know that the town's on the hook, whether they pass or fail, pay-wise.
For, yeah, for that period of time. But they're at the probationary rate at that point.
OK. Do you have anything?
Couple questions. In your agreement that you came up with to provide this benefit to the training firefighters, is there any part of that, there's a retention period after that? Or are they free to leave as soon as they graduate?
So I'll take that one. This is an item that's discussed almost every time this kind of thing comes up in any municipality where it comes up. We are advised by Abel Labor Council that indentured servitude and slavery are no longer allowed in the United States of America.
And I wasn't looking to slave anybody.
Right. But that's the doctrine that led to this not being something that we could -- some communities attempt to recoup these costs. That gets dicey, whether or not you could ever actually recover that. Frankly, this is a risk that we take with almost every single person who works for the town government, not just firefighters, but police officers have to get through their academy. We have positions in the Finance Department that require certifications. So we can invest a fair amount of money in someone and have them leave shortly thereafter. Really, it's -- management's task is to make that never happen.
Yep.
Because you create the environment where somebody who's got all the training wants to stay.
I agree with that, and I think with this last contract, the firefighters of Douglas have a very good contract, to the point where they even wanted to have a, and this is sort of unheard of, but they wanted a physical fitness standard for the firefighters that are here to stay, so that they stay fit, not just, OK, I pass it once and then quit me, and I'm good, but a yearly standard--
Yep.
--that is unheard of. And like Mr. Wojcicki said, we're trying to create the atmosphere where people don't want to leave because the town takes really good care of our firefighters.
Really, what the training does is it sets the standard and it gives the perception that we're a professional organization, and we have high standards, and we're physically and mentally prepared to do our jobs. And that goes a long way for morale within the fire department. So having access to that training and the ability to send people is super important to recruiting and retaining firefighters.
One more question.
Go ahead.
Do you have, how many people do you have planned or in the system right now that are going to be going through this? And do you anticipate more coming through? Because I'm just curious how it would affect your budget.
Great. You know, we have two that are scheduled to go, and that was something we weren't able to see last year, that we had two people that did not make their probation, and so they were, they moved on.
They came in the doors, trained firefighters.
They came in the doors, trained firefighters, which I think we've had the conversation before, that you have both sides. You have the one where you have the training for, as a paramedic, and you also have the training for a firefighter. Unfortunately, with the climate that's out there now, you can't always get both, and there's just, you don't have both out there right now. It's just not the way it is. So we picked the best paramedics that we could get the last time we hired, and they seem to be working out very well, and they're very excited about going to the Fire Academy, very motivated. And those are the type of people that we want to attract and retain.
The question was how many are in the setting? So one member is currently in his second week in the Full-Time Fire Academy. When he finishes, we're sending another person to the Full-Time Fire Academy. And then intermixed in that, one of our hires, who was hired back in 2020, who had an injury, she's going to be attending the Fire Academy heading between that time and the late winter into the springtime. So total, by the end of this fiscal year, three will have gone, and we'll be up to par, and we'll have six firefighter paramedics and one firefighter basic, but that is basic. So everyone will be trained as a firefighter.
That led to another question.
I guess the point, though, that I want to assure you is that they're not all going at the same time.
That's what I was--
So we're not bleeding out a whole shift rotation. They're managing that.
Because you got to backfill that shift.
We're trying to be smart about it and cycle them through one at a time. And there's also, there's also a waiting list at the academy that's backed up because of COVID, so it's, you know, we've got to get, we can't, we're not sending people multiple all at once. We've done that with the Call Firefighters, but we're not doing that with the full-time members.
Thank you.
Hal, do you have any questions?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. It sounds like a good plan.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Fire Department MOU, as written.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those, roll call vote?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone, an aye?
Davis, aye.
There you go. OK. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good chiefs.
Thank you, chief.
Moving on to item number five. I did not see my attorney, Rich Bowen, comment on the final contract. I didn't get a chance to look at it regarding the soldiers' field use for the movie they're going to film, so I just pushed that--
They could take the changes, but Rich, whoever commented on it--
Just one final way in.
Yeah, I do--
So I don't think it's earth-shattering where we can't just wait another two weeks to allow one final review of that. One thing I think we never asked was if this was to be rated G, PGR, else, what is the film?
The league that I played in would definitely be rated R.
Right. Yeah, well, rated R, I'm OK with. It's just, yeah, right? So we may just ask, yeah.
Is kicking the cooler with your--
I don't think this is--
--rated R or PGs or--
No. So, yeah, I don't think we'll see the script, but maybe an anticipated grade if there's a rating, I suppose. Moving on, item number six, the authorization for the town administrator to sign the lease for an industrial communications or radio project.
So Industrial Communications owns the tower on the Webster-Douglas Line, just off Route 16. It's on the town line, exactly. It's a cable TV tower. It's not a telephone tower. The tower is used to broadcast updates to people's cable TV equipment. So if you have a box and the hardware is updating on a regular basis, it's getting that wireless signal from the tower. But it is available, and Industrial Communications does-- But it is available, and Industrial Communications does, throughout New England, rent space on their towers for public safety radio. We need this location to be one of our two microwave-enabled locations to greatly enhance our ability to talk to each other when we're out in that part of town. Because right now, the coverage is pretty thin. We've gone through this long talk in the past, you know, trees interfere, rolling hills interfere. The microwave simulcast system is supposed to affect that. So we will have a microwave facility on this tower and one on our water tower on the Monopole upon the Chesbrough property. And then from there, the rest will be fiber backhaul and traditional broadcast antennas.
We'll have the other antenna on the school.
On the high school, for that part, the High Point over there. This was a quick and dirty negotiation. It ends up being $800 a month, which was back to the original lower estimate.
He anticipated.
So that was good news. Rich Bowen has reviewed this thoroughly. I had a couple of questions myself about some of the provisions, but Rich was very comfortable with them. He said it's standard practice. So while we agree that if Webster were ever to tax our equipment, we'd pay the bill, we won't be paying a bill to the town of Webster unless they want to stop paying us for stuff. The, it is a standard in the industry for us to have our own meter. So all of our equipment will be using power. We will get a power bill for that. But that's standard in the industry. So everything else checked out with Mr. Bowen as being acceptable. So I would ask that you give me the authority to sign it so we can move this along and keep the project going. The project is going along pretty steadily at this point.
Yeah, I know communications historically been very difficult here in town. If this helps solve much of that, I'm all for it. Any other comments, suggestions, thoughts?
It is in the budget too, by the way. So.
Okay.
I move approval.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those, do it again.
Fitzpatrick aye.
Bowen aye.
Davis aye.
Awesome. Moving on to some minutes.
Do you want to do the minutes tonight in light of the fact that we are missing two members though?
Well, in the interest of, I could go either way. In the interest of clearing Lisa's desk, we could approve them. Let's hold off on those if that makes sense. Let's do that. So we will skip over item number seven to go to number eight, the town administrator's report.
First and foremost, let's talk about the inevitable COVID conversation. This stupid thing is everywhere, you know. It's really, just look at what's happened, right? The state has actually stopped counting, right? They don't send us reports. If they do, it's once a week on a Thursday. It's not the same drill that we were doing where we're looking at the daily drumbeat and how many new cases and hospitalizations and deaths each day. To the best of my knowledge, we have well over 100 cases in Douglas right now. As a parent with kids in the public schools in the town where I live, I mean, I'm just, we are getting so many mixed signals from so many different directions and so many people about how to deal with this. The latest guidance is that, because Omicron seems to be a milder variant of the virus, that when people come down sick with it, they're quarantined for five days, not 10. They can return to work or school, well, no, it's not talk schools. They return to work for five days. After five days of quarantine, they have to wear a mask. Last I checked, that was the rule. But we see how things are going. In a neighboring state in Rhode Island, healthcare workers with COVID have to report to work. They're going to be assigned patients who have COVID. So we are, all bets are off as to what our standards are going to be. It is a milder variant, I think, at this point. If the same ratio of people were going to the ICU as were early on in the pandemic, we would be in a crisis right now with all of these cases. But that's not what's happening. But it's making its way through town government. We have, on any given day, close to half a dozen people out, either because they've been quarantined because of close contact or because they have a positive test result. We're encouraging people to wear masks in town buildings. I've told both Public Safety Chiefs and the Highway Superintendent, if they wish to have a stricter standard for their operation, they may do so. Because we cannot really, we don't have enough people to have a lot of people out sick, especially in snow season. We've got to drive the plow trucks. We've got to run the ambulance. We've got to run the fire trucks. So that's the footing that we're taking. And we're not really making major alterations to town government. I know on the school side, the superintendent has been using the phrase, I'm sure he won't mind me speaking for him, but business as usual is part of the stock and trade answer that you're getting from the school administration right now. Business as usual. So that's what we're trying to do, the best we can to muddle through. I understand there are a lot of people out there who have gotten quite sick. And we want to be sensitive to their situation, but we also, we've got to keep the wheels on the bus turning. In your packets, you have an update letter dated today from Greman Pedersen, which is the firm that's doing the engineering over on the Cedar Street Bridge. And the recommendation from GPI to the town is that we not attempt to finish this project and open the bridge until the weather gets warmer. We have not had the number of warm days in a row necessary to do all the work at the highest level of comfort in terms of whether or not the membrane is going to adhere to the top of the concrete and then whether or not we'd be able to pour pavement and properly compact it and install it. It's just too cold. I'm not of the mind, this was a very expensive project. And if we were to make a mistake, try to pave it and rush it and get it done, and we got stuck having to rip it up and start over again in the spring, that would all be on the town's taxpayers' expense, which I would rather not do. So, or it would at least, it would be another drawdown of Chapter 90. No matter how we did it, it would be an unnecessary expense. So Greman Pedersen is urging that we not try to open that bridge. It's a disappointment to the residents, especially those who have to go all the way around to get to their homes. And we realize that and are very sorry for that. But at the same time, we don't want to give them something that is going to fall apart and just be a liability going forward. So unless there's a huge objection from the Select Board, I'd really like to adhere to the recommendations of Greman Pedersen. I'll stop there for a second. Does anybody have any questions about that? Do we want to have John Furno come in at meeting or we all sit with him?
No, I don't. I personally don't have any objections to it. This is addressed to John, so I'm assuming that if he had a big concern, he would have been here tonight. The only thing that I would comment on is the stabilization of their banking going into the water. I don't know if they've done anything with that from when they backfilled.
So they're going to continue working until they get to the very last task, until it gets too cold to do anything. You probably saw a small roller out there today.
No, I didn't.
Yes, there was a small roller out there today. They backfilled, they compacted. They're going to install some curbing. They're going to keep moving as far as they can. But there is going to be a point at which they have to stop. Railings can't be installed until a pavement's installed. That seems to be the industry standard. That's the way they want to do it. So that's when we're going to stop. Anything that requires the base coat to be down, we'll have to wait till this break. The covert is flowing. Beaver dams have been released. So we've got, a lot of that congestion around the water has been taken care of and everything's moving.
I'm of the same mindset. It was an expensive project that if we've missed our window, that we missed our window, but we do want, at the end of the day, a quality bridge for the money that we paid. So I'm okay with that too.
The lessons learned here, I mean, it may be a small town, but we end up with big town problems. To move this, to fix this bridge, we had to move telephone poles. When you move telephone poles, you have to get the ball rolling with National Grid very, very early. And when using grant money, you have to have the grant award to assure everybody that you're not just messing with their schedules for no good reason. You have to go to town meeting and do the takings, blah, blah, blah. And then you get rain on top of that. So a couple of weather delays along the way here, and this is where we've ended up.
Well, the COVID delivery was late too. That hurt them quite a bit on their schedule.
Otherwise, the workmanship that we've observed has been at a very high level of quality. We're very happy with the firm that's doing the work. Next item in your packet, I referenced it last meeting. I want to give you the full report this meeting. I don't know that we want to comment extensively on it, except that it has been distributed to you for your reference. I would draw your attention to the first page. So over the last three years, the town has paid $494,000 for property and casualty coverage. But we have submitted claims and have had claims paid of $1,687,000. So our three-year loss ratio. Yeah. Our three-year loss ratio is 341%. So as Maya pointed out to us in our most recent risk analysis meeting, if this were a different type of relationship, if this was a typical private insurer covering a business, we would have been asked to leave the business a long time ago, Frank.
Escorted to the door.
We would have, yeah, we probably would have been driven with cattle prods to the door. But because this is a municipal organization and Douglas is a founding member and member in good standing, they don't have that option to show us out. But there is a lot of urgency in their conversation with us, not only about the size of our claims, but the frequency of our claims. So you see this list in this last column on the chart. You know, we've had, the final on the high school science wing pipe burst was 951,000. And we had the pump failure and the oil leak in the boiler room here at Town Hall is another 505,000. That's capped. And then four other claims. So we've had six claims in three years. So that's the cause for concern. On Maya's part is that their entire action plan is around training, around using technology and sensors and other ways to supplement our risk management efforts. But clearly, this is an item that we're going to have to get under control or we're going to start to see the account grow so rapidly, it'd be very difficult to afford on a go-forward basis. This is going to play into, I don't know where I'm going to come out with the budget, but if there's resources available, we may have to address some of this operationally, whether it's with staff or with other operational changes in order to get a better handle on why we seem to be a magnet for claims. And it's a shame, because if you go through this report, you can see the saving grace for the town is that all of those other aspects of our property liability coverage, we are actually a perfect, if not crazy good, client. So on professional liability, our three-year loss ratio on professional liability, which goes to the town's administration, is only 11%. On workers' compensation, we're very low, 29%, knock on wood. Then following the summary of our loss ratios, there are mandatory recommendations. So we really have to do these two things. Implementation of a maintenance protocol for fuel oil tank systems. I feel like, I've used this phrase before, I'm going to use it again. I feel like the voice of one crying in the wilderness. I am absolutely of the mind that I would like a product liability lawsuit filed against the vendor. I just think that's the right thing to do. I can't seem to get any of the attorneys I talked to to pay attention, or the insurance company themselves don't seem to be interested in pursuing it. But I don't know why they would accept these losses. But any case, they have a long series of recommendations here in terms of inspections, routine maintenance, and more in-depth investigation of all of our assets to make sure that we're not fouled with this biofuel problem. And the second thing really comes, is pretty much the same. Maya is asking us to implement a formal written program that includes scheduled maintenance inspections for building utility systems and a protocol to help prevent property water loss due to mechanical failures. So we face one of these issues now, for instance. We have four air handling units on the roof of the municipal center, four of them. They were installed when the schools were up there. Two of them failed some time ago. They have heat exchanger problems that leaks. So we've been running this building with two instead of four. Now a third one has developed a problem with the heat exchanger. So we are basically keeping the second floor of this building, which is fully plumbed and all the water is live. We're keeping out the cold with one doing the job that used to be done by four. So maybe four was overkill, but two was pretty much the minimum, and we're limping along with one right now. We can't really operate a unit with a leaky heat exchanger. We basically will be pumping toxic fumes right back into the building, so we can't be doing that. So we have one that's running, and they're old. They're over 20 years old. So these are the kinds of things that we need to get on top of. Now, we do have money from town meeting to address that. We're pursuing the possibility of putting this out to bid very soon. Trying to coordinate this concept with the roofing of the building. But we really don't have a lot of time to waste. I'm not going to get too preachy about it, but we can save, 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 save on capital maintenance. It's not real savings, right? So if you don't do service contracts, if you don't do regular PMs, preventive maintenance every year, and don't put those things into your budget, you've done a fine job of not spending any money for 10 years. And then year 11 comes along and you find yourself having to replace the whole gosh darned thing all at once, and it's a crisis. And that's what municipalities have to avoid as they manage their finances. Are there any questions about that? I've got probably one more thing I'll go over, maybe two more things I'll go over. Any questions about Maya? The next thing is a report I only received late this afternoon. I don't feel comfortable distributing it until I have had a chance to ask my questions. But we have our initial groundwater monitoring results for the fuel oil spill in the basement of the building. And we blew the test limit for three different substances in one of the wells, one of the six or seven wells. We blew it by a lot. Now, it happens to be inside the building. So I'm sure we're not done with this. I'm sure there's going to be a plan to try to take the contaminants up through the system and prevent it from getting in the groundwater outside. That seems to me is going to be the recommendation. So we are still at this. It's not going to go away anytime soon, I don't think.
It's taken a half a million dollar project and adding to it?
So Maya already paid all it's going to pay, 505,000. And we are up to.
650 is all.
650. 650 total. So town meeting just approved the funds to get ahead of this. We haven't spent all of that out yet, so I think, I forget what town meeting approved exactly. I won't give you a figure. I know that our most recent bill was 49. So I know we asked town meeting for a lot more than that, but I don't think we're going to come in under. I think we may have to go back and ask for more. I'm just not optimistic.
Which we knew that was a possibility during that heavy rain, where we're getting false positives on them.
Our electrical vehicle charging stations were completed today in terms of their installation outside. The last step that's necessary is to fire up the software and establish terms of payment and rates, which will be your decision to make as a board. But I'm glad we have it, and we'll probably go, I don't want to say crazy, but we'll be very aggressive about making sure people know that they're here. Because once they're on, we pay a bill. So for folks who have electric vehicles, if your kid's playing basketball, and when the weather's nicer and you want to park here and go for a walk, spend that hour, plug your unit in, use your credit card to pay for the juice, it's here, and we want people to use it. I think we're also going to have to pursue the possibility of one of our inspection functions, you know, sharing electric vehicle, trying to get some grant assistance for that. And that means it'll always be used for the benefit of the town. But this is the wave of the future. If we don't use it for a year or two, we will eventually be using it pretty steadily, I'm sure. Which was the whole point of using grant money to fund the entire installation, the purchase of all the equipment. Because it's coming around the corner, and there's going to be anything we can do about I'm in the process of posting a number of significant procurements, the things that have been approved by town meeting and the Capitol Committee. We're getting down to getting all this stuff out in January so that the spring construction season will be very busy around town. We're also trying to get some clarification around opera funds, because if they might be able to use some opera funds to help out with some of these projects. But in particular, we're starting tomorrow with a walkthrough of all the municipal center electrical needs, because that contract, that design contract was awarded and the work is going to begin. I think McRitchie's been working on this, and they're already, and they're coming to verify a number of things that they've already started to work in their design. The idea would have that generator project done, six, five, April, April, May timeframe, because we want that, all that work to be out of the way before we start the roof.
There wasn't a big lead time on the generator?
I haven't gotten that impression yet. There should be. That's, the industry's saying is...
I thought that's what we had said before, that's why I was asking.
But sometimes, I think there's also people in the industry who have ways to get things. So I think, hoping we've networked with the right group.
Yeah.
But, so what's going out to bid now is the design work, and then we will follow the same process. So we'll post the RFQ. The RFQ will be opened. The Building and Facilities Committee will arrive at three finalists and make a recommendation to the select board. You'll pick the final designer for the electrical work at the fire station, which is mission critical. We are getting by on Band-Aids and bubble gum right now, holding it all together, but it's not a long-term solution. It's not even a middle-term solution, what we're doing right now. So I hope to have that out, library plastering work, hope to finish the gym windows procurement process all within the next month or so while we're setting up the budget. Because once we start with the budget, there won't be much else to talk about. That's a long enough update, I think, Mr. Chairman. I think we've got a lot of irons in the fire. I think everybody knows that. I guess I should say this much, the EDA grant process is ongoing. This is like, you know, actually, there's two things I want to talk about, but this EDA grant process is the most tedious, complicated, probably overwrought federal grant process there is. And we're doing environmental impact, we're doing all kinds of things. The good news is the process with MEPA, which would be the Massachusetts Environmental Review, where it looks like we're headed towards a very minimal, it's called agency action, and it's very minimal. We're not going to have to do much. So that's the good news, and that, trying to get this application in before the end of January so that decision can be made on our application by March. That's the goal.
Boy, we have you and Bob working on this.
I don't have much hair left, Hal, but you can have the rest of mine. But, you know, of course, Bob is working very hard on the groundwork on this, and I appreciate his efforts. And lastly, I guess it's just a word of condolence. You know, we had one of our call emergency medical technicians lose a child to COVID, which is a very sad thing. I can't imagine as a parent having to say goodbye to a child. So that's a terrible thing that happened to Edie Cardwell, and we wish her and Chief Vincent and everybody who's in that family group the best. We also know the passing of Mary Hughes, who's a longtime select board member, former chairman. Mike Hughes's mom passed away at the age of 90 in Bellingham on Christmas Day. So sad for those folks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Well, thank you.
A question, Tim, if I might?
Of course, Hal. Fire away.
A question on the oil situation in the basement. Have we considered doing a cap or slab and then putting an activity and use limitation on the property? Instead of trying to get every bit of oil out?
Well, I'm familiar with the ULA process. I don't know if we're there yet, Hal, because the groundwater infiltration is problematic. I think the ULA, the cap and maintain is when you're not in the groundwater. And we need a clean bill of health before we can get that. If you look at where this is...
Let's peek and help us.
Yeah. I mean, I'll look into it, Hal. I'll ask the contractor, since he's communicating with us, what the next step will be. But this contamination is under the cement, it's already under the building.
The challenge we have is the surrounding grades is going to help move the groundwater.
Yeah. Yeah, we're up high, Hal, and that's the issue. We're higher than the properties around us.
All right. Are there any topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to this meeting?
One item, there were all the things happening in the town, it seems to me that at every annual town meeting, we present a state of the town address, something maybe 10 minutes and bring the town up to date at the annual town meeting as to what the Board of Selectmen perceives as the major issues and progress and problems that we're facing. A lot of cities and towns do that already, and I think that would be a good thing to maybe add to the annual town meeting. We can talk about it in the future.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, go ahead.
I've always supported this and wanted to do this, much to the chagrin of the governing board in Tiverton, I was doing it there. But it's not just that town meeting. We should probably record this for cable, you know, for rebroadcast on cable TV. I appreciate the annual report. There's a tremendous amount of work that Suzanne used to always put into the annual report. There's a lot of great information in there. I don't think people are taking it. I don't think they're reading it. Wherever we drop off boxes of copies of this thing, we don't get a lot taken. So I think there's a group out there that still does read them religiously, especially those people who are on boards and commissions. They're already actively engaged in the town. They care enough, they really look through things, some of our more active citizens. But that's 50, 100 people, and we're producing 1,000 copies of this thing. I think it might get more traction if we do a couple of brief videos, maybe only eight minutes each, hit a couple of topics in each one. Then if you're up at 2:00 in the morning, because you watched the Red Sox play on the West Coast, and you can't fall asleep, and you hit local cable access, and there's the select board saying that following things were done this year, you might just listen. Any way we can get our message out there, whether we play it on Facebook, whatever we do, it'd be a lot more effective than hoping that people pick up a copy of the town report.
Yeah, that's something we certainly talked about a number of years, and I think it's just a matter of pulling the trigger and committing to it. So certainly open to that, and I'm sure the board members not present would probably support that. But we'll talk about that more, Hal. Anything else? Are we going into executive session? We are. All right. So with that, entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining and investigation, and to leave executive session for the purpose of adjournment. Take a roll call vote?
Second.
No, second. Go ahead.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone and aye.
Davis, aye.
Great.
All right, we'll call you.